All right, we are good to go.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Thursday, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four meeting, uh, the Valley and planning. I'd like to, uh, speed this process up in the agenda. I'd like to start on. Rob, can you talk about the two continuances for tonight?
Yeah, so the first one, Zero Maple Street, or what's listed as Assessor's Map Thirty Seven Lots Three and Three A. Uh, that has been out to peer review. We haven't received peer review back yet, so the applicant requested a continuance to the July eighteenth meeting. And then hope by then we definitely will have peer review back. He might actually be able to revive plans. And, uh, actually get some responses back to it by then as well.
Okay, um. Before we ask for a motion, when is this decision deadline?
That is in September for that one, so we're okay.
Uh, to move forward, uh, we need, uh, going to take a motion for a continuance.
To when? Uh, July eighteenth, so.
Um, second, okay, we have discussion. Any discussion on this? You have room for it? I just asked, what do we have on the agenda?
That one, we have, um. We will have Prospect Hill, but that one should be relatively quick because that's just going to be discussion regarding the traffic peer review. And then we also have. We might have a preliminary subdivision plan for that one as well. That one. Yeah, nobody's seen that just came in today. Um. And then that should be it. And then also we'll be continuing another thing to for that. So it's gonna be. A lengthy agenda, but I think the items aren't going to be extremely. Lengthy in time, but.
Bill, any comments? This, how's our August meeting?
August, I don't think we have anything there yet. I would like to get this on the July eighteenth one, just so we can get. And if we have to continue it again, then we'll have this discussion on July eighteenth, but, um.
I, I think right now, Stephen. I think right now. Talk about the eighteenth, I think is appropriate. I think, um, also. I know we're having discussion. It may be a little crystal clear. Our meeting, uh, may not be as long as we think with the agenda on the next time we continue.
Correct.
So, um. Call for the vote.
Hi.
Hi.
Bill, I.
Bill, I. Steve, I.
Um, I'm gonna go back. For attendance purposes.
Nick, present.
Brian, present.
Bill O'Connell, present.
Bill DeWine, present.
Deeply, I'm present.
Now that we have, by the way, that motion passed. Can you bring us up to speed on, uh, three oh six Maple Street?
Yeah, so three oh six Maple Street at the last meeting, we discussed just getting some, uh, decisions rendered. So I did that. The plan was tonight to discuss that with the applicant. The applicant unfortunately couldn't make it due to an emergency. Tonight, so he requested that we continue to July eighteenth. We would definitely need to continue this to July eighteenth and not the August meeting due to the deadline, um, for that decision. My intent is to get that extended to August, so then that way we can basically do exactly what we were gonna do here tonight where. We can discuss the decision, see if there's any input from the board, discuss with the applicant, if there's any fine tuning or anything that needs to be done, we can. Finish things up with the August meeting, so.
I assume something obviously unforeseen.
Correct, yeah. I just received the continuance last night, so, and yeah, it was. An emergency, so.
Did they agree to extend the deadline?
Not yet, so. That's why we gotta go through July eighth, so, but. There's been emails back and forth. I just gotta get the signature, so.
I would indicate a motion. So we'll grab a second. Your motion on the floor, uh, has been seconded. Any discussion? I have none.
None.
So I suspect what we'll do is, uh, at that point, uh, close the public hearing and review the decision.
I would probably keep the public hearing open.
Even while we're discussing the decision?
Yeah, with the applicant's input, I think, and then maybe perhaps after that discussion, it might make sense to close the public hearing and. Or, you know, we can.
Okay, I just, okay.
Yeah.
I just know we, we can't go into great detail.
No.
Okay. That motion passes unanimously. What do you want to do next, Rob?
I think so. The other public hearing that was continued, the rest is general business, but I think we should probably handle the procedural rules.
Yeah.
Public hearing, which. Um, I'll be happy to discuss with everybody. I can pull this up. I'm gonna pull it on our, this screen, let's see. So. At the last meeting, I know we had our consultant here, Emily Servo from Italian Bond, who presented just kind of the overview of why we were doing this. We have to be in compliance with our EPA MS four permit. There's post-construction items that need to be addressed and. The way that our regulations are set up is in our procedural rules. That's where all of our stormwater regulations are. It's kind of odd. It's like cross-reference in our zoning bylaws, but. Nonetheless, there were. Updates that were made, and I know that was submitted to the board for review. You've got, it's got, I think, a clean copy and the redline copy. The redline copy is a lot easier to follow to see what's changed and what hasn't. Um. So at the last meeting, Phil, I know you brought up two items that. Definitely made sense to get changed. One of them was the deadline for submittals. Hmm. So on our website, the submission deadline is eleven, submitted eleven. Before eleven AM, the Friday before our meetings, which. Is all great, but we try to get our, the drop boxes set up at least by Thursday afternoon, Friday morning, the latest. So if people are submitting stuff and Friday at eleven, it's gonna be tricky to get everything in the drop boxes on Friday. So what I did was I actually changed our procedural rules that, um, like I can even read it here. It's section one point nine for meeting agenda. And it's been changed to all persons wishing to meet with the board shall request appointments through the planning board office. No later than noon on Wednesday of the week preceding the meeting, providing information regarding the subject matter to be presented or discussed. This includes revised materials associated with ongoing applications being presented to the planning board. And then agenda times are subject to availability. So that way. It's now when we have to update the submittal deadline on the website, that it will be the Wednesday before the meeting, which I think. It just makes sense. It'll give us time, myself and Amy, time to. Actually look through the application and see if there's anything missing, because we don't wanna just. Receive it, put in the Dropbox, have you guys look at it, and then I look at it on Monday after you've reviewed it and I say. Oh, we're missing a bunch of stuff. It's incomplete. Forget it. It's not gonna be on the agenda, so.
So the one question I have is the way this is written. Providing information regarding the sub- the subject. Comma there. I think we're planer on the website, and I printed off the website, you could. This, this is our new website, but I think it was pretty much off the same as the other ones, too. I printed this off today. On the bottom of the section. All documents for continued public clearance must be submitted in both print and PDF format, no later than eleven AM on Friday, which. About what date of the week prior to the scheduled hearing? I thought that was crystal clear. Boom. There's no question.
Yeah, no, I, I gotcha.
And. This, and that's interpretate, I mean, if I was coming in arguing, I didn't have my stuff in on Wednesday, I'd be like. I didn't really say that.
No, I, I.
But maybe we gotta type, I, I just, if there was, type that up.
What page were you in?
What was that?
What page? I'm sorry.
This is page. And five.
Yeah. Which I, I don't think we really, yeah, Brian, please. The other while he's looking that up is the overview, um. Paragraph above it doesn't belong in this procedural rule, but says click here to learn more about the planning board. It's like. There's nothing to click on.
What are we talking about?
The paragraph right above it. No link.
Are you talking about the website?
Yeah.
Well, the what, yeah, the.
The paragraph for later though.
Listen, we can talk about the website for hours today. This is the new website.
Well, it was like right there, yeah. Brian, I'm still a bus driver for Brian here, so. So. Subject for five minutes. But.
I don't know.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
If we're just having a discussion. What is the downside to just making Wednesday a Monday? I would make, take this language, put it right in there and say Wednesday.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, Wednesday's part, I like Wednesday and the day. The reason why we would not wanna do that? Yeah.
No, all I did for the language that was already there, I just tried to craft it based on. The language that was already there, because I just said Wednesday, and then added that this includes revised materials associated with ongoing application being presented to the planning board.
I sort of liked that part in there. I think, what do you think, Brian?
There's nothing wrong with it.
It's straightforward. You like it the way it's straightforward and it's written?
I, I can make sense of it.
Hold on, I just wanted to, what version do you like? Is change or the?
The change.
Okay. Yeah. If you guys are fine with what's on that, with what's on it.
Yeah, and I think, you know, ultimately it will be up to, you know, like myself and Amy, you know, we're kind of the gatekeepers of trying to make sure that the material that gets, once it gets to you, it's completed and.
Well, I don't wanna have, I mean, I just don't, and any questions whatsoever. It's a procedural rule. That's it. There's no questions. You don't even have to argue about it.
Yeah, and I mean, I guess. This, this documentation delivery deadline that's on the website wasn't consistent with what was in here, which, and I think this is what was. Usually everybody was held to.
That's what we held everybody.
Yeah, so which is why I think even if we keep this language like this, and then we update this to say eleven AM on Wednesday, I think we'll be covered.
That's fine. It works.
Right? Okay, so that was, all right, perfect. So we can do that. And then the other item too, um.
We just all have to say eleven AM. One says noon.
Oh, yeah, no later than noon on Wednesday. Let's stick with noon on Wednesday, because I really don't wanna change this again, if that's.
Eleven thirty seven AM.
Thank you, Brian.
Just so you can get the lunch on time.
Lunch.
You gotta watch out for it.
Yeah. The other item regarding the peer review fees, it stated previously that the applicant was required to pay the peer review fees. As once submitted, once the application was submitted, which. That's not the way it works typically, because we usually go through the peer review scope.
And you don't know what they are.
We don't know what it is until you have a chance to actually look at it, so. There are some towns that will actually require a deposit, and then they go to the peer review, and there's like this back and forth. I don't wanna start that process, because it's just. I guess we'll get the peer review scope figured out, and then we'll get the money from the applicant. So now there is, I basically just struck out the portion that said. That it was required at the time of the submittal and just said. The applicant may be required to pay the peer review fee at any time deemed necessary by the planning board during the review process.
Does that mean that they may not be required to pay?
I'm just gonna.
Because that's a little, you know, it's a little confusing.
Shall be required?
Because that, that leads you to believe that they may or may not have to pay for the fee. I, that's the way I interpret.
That was how it was written previously, but, um.
You don't tell.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, but I'm out.
That's why I'm about to go. I can, yeah.
Yeah, I mean. I can do, the applicant shall be required. It's, it's up to you guys.
I, I, if every applicant has to pay for peer review, I, in my opinion, I think it should say shall.
Yeah, I guess there are, just because if it were me, I'd say, well, what?
I mean, I may not wanna do it.
Yeah.
I'm opting out.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's necessarily the way it works, but the, I will say that. I think the reason why it said May was because there are. Instances where, like, for example, if you have to get something done, like a DPW study for like fire flows, usually the applicant pays for it. But I think that there were some circumstances where something else occurred. I don't know, but.
How about, how about, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but how about? The sentence saying the peer review, the, shall be paid by the applicant at any time deemed necessary by the planning board during your review process.
That's fine by me.
Second.
So.
There was the peer review fee. Shall be paid. By the applicant. And then just the rest of the sentence, at any time deemed necessary.
Perfect. So I can make that change, um. That's easy enough. If you want, um. This. We were required to be in compliance with EPA by the end of this month, which we're at the end of the month. So if it's something as minor as that, I would request that the board makes a motion to. Um, approve these with the revision. That way I can get that. Posted with the town clerk tomorrow with that revision, if that makes sense. If there's anything else you guys want to see, I think we. Went through it pretty good last.
So this will comply based on these changes. It'll drop into the storm review. Then we have to have to on July first, correct?
Correct, yeah, it's. So we're actually out of compliance. I guess we've been out of compliance, I think, since twenty twenty.
Okay.
Do I, listen, I'm new here, so I don't know what, or maybe it was twenty twenty one. I, I forget, but. We are. We're now gonna be in compliance, so it's all good, and EPA has worked with us. They understood that. The situation with the town, there's been some turnover and such, so. Um, anyway, that's where we're at with this.
I have a question.
Sure.
I think we need to do two separate motions. One to make, approve the changes for the procedures.
Sure.
And then another one. To update our latest document for stormwater from the state to reflect our recent change.
Well, it's not from the state. It's from our consultant, so. The motion would be to. I mean, I think if you wanna do two motions or.
Do we do it in one, definitely?
Yeah, I think if you, the motion would simply be to, um, approve the procedural rules drafted by our consultant. But the revision regarding the peer review fees. Shall be paid by the applicant at any time deemed. Hold on. Deemed necessary by the planning board during the review process. Here we go.
Whatever he said, correct?
Whatever he said.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second, there.
Any further discussion, Nick?
No.
No.
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
Uh, call for the vote.
Bye.
Bye.
Hi, Bill, I.
Bill, I. Steve, I.
That motion passes unanimously. Here's the next item on the agenda is going to be, um. Down in general business, can you bring us up to date on the one sixty eight Men's Street discussion?
Sure, so this project, I'm a little bit new to myself, because. I don't think I was involved with the site plan review process for some reason when I was the associate member for this. I think this was when I had COVID, but. Um, basically. It's the site, one sixty eight Mendon Street at the corner of Mendon Street and Williams Way.
Hmm.
And we received, I'm gonna share this. This is from the fence contractor. The. Owner is looking to get approval for this. Fence, so I'm pulling in, I just pulled it up. I know it was in the Dropbox. I don't think this is in your actual package, though, but. Basically, um. They're proposing a, a six-foot height chain link fence. With fabric around the site and. There's, they wanna put two gates on Mendon Street, which they're thirty feet wide. Access points, those are existing from when, I think, what was this, the old fifties, I don't know, so. That's, this is what they're proposing. Now. I did a little research. I actually, in your packets, there is the decision for that site plan review that we had for this. Um. I can pull that up too. Maybe, but. There were a couple items in there that contradict this a little bit. Matter of fact, I'm gonna stop sharing this for a minute. I'm gonna pull up the plans that were submitted.
I think I have them, so.
More like a letter.
Yeah, it's a letter, and yeah, because it's site plan review, so it's a little different.
And the special permit went away.
That is my understanding, because there's no special permit decision on file, because I think there already is a special permit for bulk storage for this. So.
Yeah, the way I remember it, it was the bulk storage was purview of the selectmen. Which meant that you're gonna put it in their hands for the bulk storage, right?
It's my memory.
I'm sorry.
The bulk stor- bulk storage would be purview of the selectmen, so. Yeah, I think this is, the discussion was, I think, that, um. They weren't doing bulk storage. They were storing.
Palate stones.
Palate stones.
But.
But did they, but did they already have a bulk storage for part of the property? They bought, they bought the property with the permit, and the question then, does the permit travel with the landowner?
Yeah, so there was that, that, and it was basically the way I remember it, we referred to the thing with selectmen, but that piece did, but. Yeah, I, I remember we had lengthy discussions about the fence. And that. Correct me if I'm wrong. I recall that we wanted one X on Mendon River and one on Williams Way. I felt we wanted an eight-foot fence.
That's what the decision reads, which, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll get to the decision in one second before.
Is that the original?
This is the original that was submitted, which shows there is a, uh, there's a gate on Williams Way, and then there's, if, they were proposing two entrances. These are the existing curb cuts that are on Mendon Street. Um. So that's what was proposed, and I do recall. Discussion about access on William Way. Now let me, what I'm gonna do is. I said, you're in for a real treat tonight. You have photos. If I can open this. I don't know what. I'm gonna say, I don't know what he's saying over there, but I'm sure.
Complimenting you on your IT process.
A compliment?
Yes.
Nice, certainly. Now, surprisingly, they're talking about me. All right, so. All right, this is from, I'm standing on the side of Williams Way. So the, the fence is partially constructed. Obviously, it's, it's kind of hard to see, but that's just black chain link. Six feet high. Not opaque. I don't, I assumed, because they're in the process of doing this, that. You know, there's. I assume a, a plan to put up fabric. Either way, it needs to be opaque, because that's what was in the decision that states specifically that material can't be seen. Um, so that's one of the items here. And you can see the material too, that is, um. You know, it's all palletized. There's more photos along the front of the site. There's those Conex boxes, which I think if there's an eight-foot fence, which is what was required for the decision. That, um. You know, that would be screened as well. These are the, the curb cuts. The front lawn needs to be cut very badly.
Those are three pallets high, right?
Uh, no, that, that's one pallet right there.
That's one pallet?
Yeah, let me see if I can get it. So this is two pallets high.
And, and he agreed to keep it at two pallets high.
All right, so there's some in the back here that are not these two pallets high.
What is it, what is it that he stores?
That is, uh, it looks like Uniblock pavers. So basically, they came, they were requesting. Approval for the six-foot height fence with the fabric. Obviously, there's some issues that need to be addressed for the site plan review, so. My recommendation, obviously, is not to say, oh, yeah, go ahead with the six-foot fence with, you know, fabric on it. What I can do is, is discuss with the property owner, go through the site plan review. If he wants to come in and see if you, there's a change that he wants to make, that's fine, but. Obviously, we have a site plan review. We have a decision. That's what we need to go by, unless they come in and request.
And everything we have for is documented.
Correct.
And we also have meetings, minutes, and videos to support what we're saying.
Correct. Yeah.
I, I'm. I like to stay. With what we've out.
Yeah, I, I think that that makes sense, especially where, you know, the whole point is to screen the material and make it look. Okay from the screen, so.
Should we agree that if they. Are attempting to put out the fabric that is, you cannot see through, that that's still not acceptable?
That's up to the board, um, I mean.
That's not opaque, though, correct?
Usually it's not very opaque. Usually you can see through it.
It's all seats there. And I can tell you there. One of the first pictures, there's pallets that are pushed nearly up against the fence and. Any more of the forklift after, you know, one summer is gonna bump that fabric and it's gonna tear it.
Yeah, I usually with the, the fabric doesn't hold up long, and it's more of a temporary situation, which. You know, we don't really want temporary fixes in town. If you're running a business, you have storage, you want it to be permanent, so. Um. So what I can do is, this is just a general business item. They came in for. Any feedback regarding that, that Mr. Fence's submittal. Um, if it's all right with the board, I'd like to go back to the, to the applicant, just tell them that, you know. It would, you know, you're holding them to the, the decision, and if you wanna make any changes, come in, you can talk about it, but.
Brian, you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. The, the, the fence needs to be tall.
Yep.
That's what we asked, and, uh.
Are you, are you coming?
Well, I don't think Brian's finished yet.
Okay.
Um. Also, the, that issue, it might have been in this hearing, right? Because this makes me think of the. Down on Pulaski, there's that building that. Years ago, we asked them to screen their fence. It was a chain link fence.
The old tennis.
Yeah, the old tennis play.
It's a pump storage.
A pump storage. Pump storage. And you can see right through. Where is this? On Pulaski?
Yeah, yes, right before the bank. Right, right on the edge of the team bank.
Oh, it was the lighting place.
The old light.
Yeah, the big blue.
Purple. Pump place.
Yeah, the.
Okay.
Very similar discussion about, we all wanna see the stuff.
Yeah.
And they put this clumsy stuff up, and that's absolutely not the intent. The intent is not to be what we see now.
Yeah, I mean, there's, the screening hasn't been on at all yet. I mean, I think there's still issues too with the fact that there's material being stored there and. The site plan review has not been, uh, met, so, yeah, so I mean, there's.
And was the whole idea for the two pallets high, just for height reasons, just?
Just to make sure that it was screened. There's.
Because two pallets, you know, I, I get pallets in my business. Two pallets can equal six feet, two pallets can equal ten feet, depending on where you put on them. So if, if there's a height restriction that maintains it below the height of the fence, more so than the number of pallets that they stack.
I'll show you.
Split hairs, but that's the intent.
He agreed to two feet, and he said the pallets are usually stand, standard heights.
And he.
That's why we weren't as specific as. He might want, but that was the reason we. And the ones on the edge, I was, I drove by there tonight. The, the ones on the edge are shorter than the ones in the center. So the six foot versus the eight foot makes a difference as well, um, makes a big difference. Um, with the shipping.
Um, with the shipping containers, he's got, he's got four green ones plus two gray ones. I mean, that's not, you know, that's not intended on it either, so.
Yep.
Um, I do see number three, which talks about final landscaping plan. Not sure what that would play into here, but it is written.
Yep.
We discussed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there hasn't been a landscape planning yet.
No, but we discussed it during this process. Where they were gonna landscape it, and I now can remember, I think we allowed him the two islands, cuz they were already cut. But those islands could not be grassed and have any landscape in some nature.
Okay.
To keep them clean.
Yeah, well, I mean, he has to submit a landscape plan.
It's not even moving right now.
Oh yeah, it's, I was walking through it, it's like up to, like mid thigh, it's crazy.
No, 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 may maybe all of a sudden.
So, just to get back to your point, Steve, about the height of the um. You know, two versus three versus one versus the different pallets is that. The decision was written that all material shall be stored to not exceed the height of the fence and the height of the, exactly, so. Even the whole two stack, it doesn't matter what he's doing with pallets, it's just.
But the storage, does the storage include those green containers? And I'm asking the question because those green containers. Right up on the edge.
They've been there for a while.
There's still storage.
I think.
I, I don't know, I'm asking the question.
I just wanna check one thing. So he, in the initial plan set. And it looked like there was ground level storage containers. And then also prefabricated office units that were proposed for this. So, there was some type of.
Shipping containers that can go all the way to cross on the boat.
So, well.
I don't know, I, I think we're not to the spirit of what's going on.
Might have brought something similar, a question that was similar up, uh, and this came before us, and I think he said that. With the pavers, you would store something like poly sand, you joint the pavers with, so probably keeping on the elements.
Yeah, you can't have those out in the weather.
Yep.
There's a, I don't know whether the porta potties, the construction thing or not, there's one sitting there.
Yeah.
Wide open. He's got propane tanks locked up outside like that, which I think is a requirement, but.
Yeah, well, either way, I mean, there's more of a discussion that needs to take place. Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted, you know, there was a request for that, that plan to come in front of the board, so. I'm bringing it in front of the board, my recommendation is, you know, let, we need to have a discussion, or I need to have a discussion with the applicant. To tell them, you know, site plan review, it's written, it's documented, it's reported with the town clerk. This is what you're held by, if you don't want to do that, it specifically states that if you want to come in for any amendments, you have to come in and request them, so. And it's up to the board to grant them or deny them, so.
Did part of your conversation too is, the fencing includes any gates?
Yeah, so, right now, with what they were proposing, there was no gates proposed on Williams Way. Just two for those two existing curb cuts on Menden Street.
Long as the, you know.
Which, it sounds like the board was really wanted to have access on Williams Way. Which is understandable, since that's, you know, you want vehicles to exit, especially out of the site that way. Cuz now you have an actual stop sign intersection, rather than a curb cut on Menden.
That was, that was the reason behind it.
Yeah.
To make it flow back.
Yeah, so. Let me just pull this back up. But yeah, the, there's two thirty foot gates in the front, there's one here, and then one here that's proposed. The Williams Way gate would be over here, which is not shown on this, so. Once again, it's just something to.
Yeah, as long as that's opaque, the gates are opaque.
Yep.
And I, I, I think he won, um, that could be thirty feet on Williams Way as well, correct?
There, the gate that the whip?
Yes.
Uh, I would assume so, because if you're gonna have vehicles coming in, then. You know, they're big trucks, you're not gonna want a twenty foot gate for a big flatbed, so. Um, so anyway, that was just the overview, so. That's one sixty eight Menden, so I can, I'll reach back out to the applicant, chat with him and the fence contractor. And uh, we'll get some direction as far as how to move forward, so. We're not far, a lot of these items, I think they can be easily addressed, they just need to be addressed, you know, so.
Fine, but I think it's, we all somewhat agree.
Okay.
I think we all agree, it's in some way.
Yep, alright, so that's that.
Can you bring us up to date on the planning board and select board joint meeting?
Yeah, so July fifteenth, we have um, scheduled with the select board a joint meeting for. The appointment of an associate member, so we have an application that's in.
Okay.
No.
Do you have anything you want to add to it? Okay. Perfect.
You get to see us July fifteenth. So, um, so that was, that's just that, I hope everyone can make it at seven o'clock. We'll need at least three members.
Okay.
So, I don't know if anyone, that's not next Monday. Or the Monday after, so it's three Mondays from now.
Can I ask one favor?
Yeah.
On the agenda, can we not be first? I'll be driving back from the Cape, so if I have a little leeway in case of traffic, on the agenda. Never mind, I'll, I'll be there.
Let me see what I can do.
No, it's alright, no, no, no need.
Fair enough.
I wanna be.
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to cut your beach day short, Bill, sorry. Yep, that's the fifteenth, so July fifteenth, seven o'clock for that.
So this is specifically to discuss the applicant for the associate member?
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
So is that something that gets voted on, or how was that?
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's a joint um, appointment.
Yeah.
Appointment.
Yep.
And what we do is interview the applicants. Our applicant, and then make a decision.
Correct. That's that.
And will we know who the applicants are prior to the meeting?
Yeah, I believe, cuz you'll have, they'll be, like, kinda like what the, we give like a Dropbox, there'll be information that's submitted. I would say, but I don't know if I'm supposed to.
I don't think you can.
Yeah, so, but it'll all be public knowledge once the agenda's posted, so.
I think that's when it becomes public, is when the agenda's. Drop, Dropbox is fuel.
Yeah. Um, so that's that, I don't, site visit two oh six Mechanic Street, I don't know why that one was on general business, we already discussed that. That was just the Saturday, July thirteenth situation, that I think was just a carryover, but, so. Nothing to report there.
That's still on?
That's still on.
Yeah, they're, they're actually putting that up now, right?
Yeah.
Cuz I've driven by it a half dozen times, I've seen.
Yeah, they.
I mean, I'm, I'll go, but I see it every day.
Yeah, and.
We're also, excuse me, we're also decide where the sign goes.
Yeah.
So I think that may be a reason also.
Oh, that's fine.
To attend.
Yeah, so the purpose was for the, the mockups or the bump outs, but also, they were also going to do mockups for the stone samples. For the wall. And actually have vinyl samples with the colors for the sign, and then the sign location staked out as well, so.
And that's eight o'clock, right?
Eight, eight AM.
So, last night I drove by, and there's a gentleman with a paintbrush, blue paintbrush, painted. Uh, one of the pillars, they, had, the pillars been finalized at this point? I think there was some site meetings that were gonna happen, and where do those stand?
Well, it'll be up to the board to finalize the pillars.
On that day.
Yes.
That'll be.
Which they're already constructed, I know, it seemed like it was going to be just one as a mockup, but yeah, when I went out last. Thursday, I think it was, cuz I had to meet them for, they're doing some work in the basin as part of the conservation order. While I was out there, you know, I noticed that, okay, they're all, at that point, they were all constructed.
They were up.
They were up, so.
I drove by on the way here, they're all up, and then two and a half of them are painted.
Yeah.
What if we say no?
And you say no, and have to pull them down. But, I don't see the, I don't know, well, we'll figure it out.
Were there pillars along the front on Mechanic Street as well?
On the rendering that was submitted, are you talking?
On the plan that got approved.
I don't believe we had a floor plan for that, like a layout for the foundation.
I, I recall the pillars being on one side, being on Maple Street. To break up the linear view of the warehouse, because on the opposite side, the linear view is broken up by the loading docks. And what we wanna do is, is you go down Maple Street, the bump outs, they can look less harsh. And that was the intent of it when we, when we went through this.
I, I just, this is just me, I've driven by it, I don't see a hell of a difference. Man, that's just me.
I have had some neighbors reach out to me and say it looks nice.
Yeah, I'm, and I'm not saying it doesn't, I'm just saying unless someone, you know, I, I think if you look at it and know that it's there. You know, but I think driving by it, I, I'm not sure if anybody would really say, oh my god, it, it's a, it's a big difference.
Okay.
It doesn't matter to me, but that's, yeah, it, it, I, when you guys talked about it before. I thought it would be like, oh, you know, a, a wow factor, a little bit different, just doesn't seem that way to me.
Okay.
When we do the site walk, can you pull the landscaping plan as it's documented?
Yes.
And have us copies of it?
Yeah.
Um, I know that the last time they were here, the discussion was that. You know, fully mature trees don't grow and don't, don't survive, but.
I think that was my argument, not theirs.
Yeah, but this is.
Well, makes sense, your argument makes sense.
I'm well underwhelmed, but what's there? So I'd just like to see what's in the plan technically.
Yeah.
You mean the little bushes that they have? I'm not gonna describe them like that, cuz, but, I, I, I'm extremely underwhelmed, I'll say it that way.
Not yet, cuz they haven't gone for like occupancy yet, so.
When do they go for occupancy, after this?
Well, they have, there's, they have, from my review perspective, it's going to be once. signage, that sign situation is taken care of, the bump out situation is taken care of, the basin item is taken care of. So that's when we review and do the walkthrough for occupancy of the building.
There's no chance it's gonna happen before that site review.
Yeah, no, no, no. Was it July thirteen?
Yeah.
No.
That, that's gives us an opportunity to be.
Did we, can I ask a question, seeing how this is a, a topic on the agenda?
Yeah.
Did we go down there and tell them not to, not to put those panels up at, at some point, did someone from the town go down there and follow that?
And not put them up?
They were gonna put one panel up to show it to us.
Correct.
And we were gonna go down and see it.
Yeah.
And we were gonna approve it and say, yes, that looks good. Did, did someone from the town go down there and say, hey?
I did not.
You did.
When I went, and I don't believe anyone did, when I went down there for that, I think it was a Thursday or Wednesday, whenever we had that heat wave last week. That's when I was scheduled to go meet with them, and by that point, they're already put up, so.
If I recall, Brian, you meant we had thought. That we would see one panel up before we did our site. And then if I recall, I was not here, I was away. You mentioned prior to the meeting, that all the panels are up, and that we, you were disappointed. And we thought they were just gonna put one panel in the building, so we could look at it and review it. We then decided to push out our meeting to the fifteenth. In which we look at the panel, and the interim, they put up the panels, and it began painting. I think we were all under the impression that one panel will be up, it would stay that way until, excuse me, the thirteenth of July. Where we could make a decision on what we wanted to do.
And, and I would say it's even a little more nuanced for me, the way I interpret what they said, they were gonna put together a mockup. Not a full.
Okay.
Throughout this process, they do what they want, and then say, oh, sorry.
And you've been saying that, we, we've had an agreement.
They're gonna do it, and then we're gonna be stepping it.
Correct.
Because they already did it, and it would be unreasonable for us to say, no.
Correct.
So are they still working on this as we speak, or is, what is up is up now, and there's nothing else being done until the site visit?
No, I think they're most likely, correct me if I'm wrong, they may finish painting.
On the exterior, they, they finished with putting up the columns, they're still working on the site.
No, I meant the, the bump outs.
Yeah, the bump outs.
If it, cuz, because if they're still working on it. You know, and, and they're doing more than they were supposed to, someone probably should say, why don't you open it up until it's looked at? Because worst case scenario, you know, it could be, it doesn't quite work, underwhelmed, do you, Joe? I asked, I asked the question because I, you know. What was just stated, was stated, but, I mean, I remember sitting here with them saying, hey, we got, we're, we'll get, we'll try to get one up. And then you can come view it. Well, that happened, and then the rest of it happened, and it's like, okay, so they're not, it's like. I don't want this to become a habit of them, just ignoring what they need to do for the town.
It has become, so it's gonna happen.
And that's why I was asking, are panels completely up right now?
They are.
They are.
I think the only left is completing the painting, and I don't know how far along that is.
Well, has anybody else seen what's up? I mean, I've seen it, have. I drove by it last night.
Drove by.
I, I drove by it once.
There was one gentleman, there was a bunch of younger gentlemen with paintbrushes in their hands, and they could have been just touching it up. I'm just like, really blue paint, I mean, it, it was like. No, it was on the agenda tonight. Well, I mean, I, I would say if it's concerns about what has been seen, and it's still work being done. Then somebody should make a call to say, hold off, you know, if you've seen it, and your gut is telling you that, you know, at the end of the day, it's gonna be fine, then. You know, maybe silence is the way to go at this point.
Well, it wasn't silence, Steve, we talked about it two weeks ago, the, the, the last time, whatever the last time they came here.
Yes.
We talked about it, then the following meeting, we said, hey, I think they're already building these things.
Correct.
And it is what it is, the, the reality is, is we're stuck with the decision that we have, and it doesn't have enough substantive teeth. And specifics to really hold their feet to the fire, and they know it, so they're just doing what they want, bottom line.
Alright, so, cuz obviously, I'm, and after the fact, a lot of this stuff, so you're saying that what they're doing with the bump outs, there's no teeth, whether we like it or not?
It's not as.
Uh, listen, for me, I can just tell you ahead of time. It is what it is, you know, at the end of the day, whether it's a friggin bump out or whether it's flat. Not gonna make a hell of a lot of difference to me, you know, you got a big warehouse there, it's not gonna make, that, that's just my.
And to that point, as we discussed in a previous meeting, you know, now. Just so we don't have this situation moving forward, cuz that's clearly, that's what we don't want, is to be in the same boat, is that. With these submittals, you know, we will get a layout, and we will get the elevation, that is what will be. Specifically stated in the decision, because I think for two oh six. I don't know, I don't think we got a layout for it, we had, it was a very nice rendering. But there wasn't something that the building department could go off of with the foundations. And I think that's where there was this misinterpretation, so. Anyway, uh, moving forward.
I think it was a lesson, Steve, it was a lesson learned.
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I don't think it makes a big difference at the end of the day, for me, I mean, it is, it is what it is, you know. Can I ask what formal communication? Can I ask what formal communication has happened on this meeting that that's coming up? The site walk that we have, do they know what, it is crystal clear, we're there to talk about. The welcome bell on the inside, or we gotta show up that day, but the welcome bell on the inside, up, and let's just say.
No, no. What, based on my conversations with them, it was staking out the signage. Mockup of the stone samples, cause there are two that they wanted to run by you, and then also. Yeah, it's, yeah, and then there's also the vinyl samples for the sign. But I will explicitly tell them to not construct the sign if that's the board's concern, I will, I will do that tomorrow morning.
Their mockup was. Essentially a small, maybe some cinder blocks that are veneered with the stone, so we can actually see what it looks like.
That was.
Rather than just, you know, handed stone samples, right?
Correct, cause they they wanted to show, there was discussion about the border and spacing for the stone, so.
And then I had, I had asked. For some pictures of that stone used on similar walls, I don't know if we'll be able to provide it, or if that was. If they think they're gonna, you know. If they think that showing persons better, I guess that that's fine, but I'd like to see pictures of the entire wall with that stone. I'm sure whatever contractor they're using probably has used it in the past.
What we're trying to do again is to replicate the stone wall across the street as best we can.
Well, I don't think so.
No, I thought color wise, we were trying to do that, weren't we?
That the gray is.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, but, yeah, just a better quality wall.
Oh, obviously. But in similar, the similar color and depth. I don't mind, just one person, I don't mind being specific and telling you not to construct a wall. The sign, excuse me.
I, I mean, I'll do it, no big deal at all, that's the concern, no big deal at all, I can do that, so.
Yeah, is that monument up, that historic monument that was there, I think it was the Collie site or something like that, is that? Still up at this point?
I did see it at one point.
I saw it.
There was.
Still there, one.
There, yeah, there was a sign that was there when I walked the site a while back, like.
Very narrow, the brush top or something?
I think there was another sign, so, not sure.
But I thought it was, it was there.
It was there at one point, it was.
I was more concerned with the placement of the sign and the bump outs, I mean, every time I don't look at everything, just. I'm not, I don't wanna slow down and get rear end.
Excellent, should have, quick comment on the, on the bump outs, I think at a certain time of day, when the sun is cat. Shining on them the right way, I think that the bump outs will cast. Shadows that will kinda emphasize the depth a little bit more, I drove by, the sun was. Kind of beaming on one side of the wall, you really couldn't tell that there were bump outs, but I think at certain times of the day, you'll be able to. See them a little bit better.
And there's also, the, an, an optical illusion with the building where there does seem to. It looks like there's a little bit of depth, because of the roof cuts down, and so it's. It's better than a square box, right, it's just. If the disappointing thing about this whole conversation, it was, the whole, the whole. Guts of that whole proposal was, we need to be sensitive to the way it looks. And that is the part that's got completely screwed up, you know what I mean, so.
I I don't disagree.
That was, that's, and. It was what he did. But if you're talking to them, say, hey, well, mockup of the bump outs, you know, they should be expecting that. That that's not a done deal.
No, absolutely, and they're aware of that.
So the, so, where some of the confusion came to play, was this after the decision was made?
No, so what happened is. What I think happened was, when Jim was in transitioning, we didn't have, like, a full-time rob. With us, and and things that would get caught and are getting caught now. Didn't get caught, that whole building was constructed without the depth that we asked for. So, the good news is, is that those things aren't gonna happen anymore. But it's a shame that on this particular building. We just didn't have the staff to catch these things. And there's no reflection on Jim, or Amy, or anyone, they're doing the best they can with what, what the tools they had available to them. But I just think it's some of the details got lost because we didn't have full-time eyes on the job.
But in all fairness to the staff we had in place. Um, I believe. This piece of property was sold after we agreed on, I think it's a second owner.
Yeah, but I mean, I think.
But, yeah, we we dealt with several different people on the colors and the chips. And 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 it just got very, very convoluted, and as Brian indicated, at some point. Uh, they were doing really what they wanted to do, we caught the fact they did not put the bump outs. Ideally, the bump outs should have been part of the construction, but they weren't, so we made them put the bump outs on regardless. And I think initially they bought that, and then we were able to convince them in the decision that it was there. So we've, we've learned from this, and we'll, and we'll, we just want them.
Yeah.
As we, you know, again, we did not have a town plan. And everyone was filling in as best they could.
Yeah.
And and it was also, part of it is on that, is on the applicant.
Absolutely.
Who was just.
They were doing.
At best, well, at best, they were wildly asleep at the switch.
Correct.
At best.
At best.
Yeah.
I think they were controlling the switch. Next item on the agenda is, um, the meeting minutes.
Yes, June thirty.
I thought they looked, uh, presentation was great. I didn't see any changes. Um.
They want the energy, the most important thing. Let's just, as Mr. Sol, like, having motions, accepting motion. The recommendation. So, so Nick pointed out, there's a mistake on page four, second paragraph. Mr. Salisbury made a motion to accept a motion, should be to accept the recommendation.
Okay.
We can fix that. Strictly, respectable. I'll move to approve the minutes as amended. Second.
Any other discussion? Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Go on.
Go on.
How much you pass, is your name?
Excellent.
Anything else?
There's one other item. On the table, that is the North and Blackstone Street plan set that was accepted, or that was approved. Needs to be endorsed, um, so. I know I went through the decision, there is nothing that needed to be added based on the decision, so. That has now the signature blocks on the planning board, uh, for the planning board, if you guys would like to. Endorse that tonight, more than welcome to. If not, let me know what, what you would want to endorse it, but it should be all set to endorse.
Um, before we do that, uh, any comments from the public, I don't wanna. Okay. So I don't think we need, need a specific motion, cause I think it was made at the last meeting.
To what?
Sign that?
No, I don't need to make a motion, you just sign it, yep, and then we can give it back to the applicant.
Right.
I move to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Go on.
Go on.
A motion passes, let me just look. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm adjourned.